Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission Work Session Tuesday, October the first, 2024. Dr. Russell, would you like to get us started?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. We have a brief agenda this evening. We've had two agenda items, CBE Case 2403 by BMD, I'm sorry, BMPD LLC for the Craddock area. Mr. Bill Landfair is making this presentation for Ms. Valerie Malzahn, head of conflict today.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Bill Landfair, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth Planning Department. The first application before you today is a request for a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a single-family dwelling within the 50-foot seaward buffer of the Resource Protection Area, or RPA, at 208 Allen Road. Resource protection areas are comprised of tidal wetlands and shores, non-tidal wetlands connected and contiguous to water bodies with perennial flow, and the landward 100-foot buffer, which is further divided into a 50-foot seaward and 50-foot landward buffer. Development within the Resource Protection Area is regulated by Chapter 9.1 of the Portsmouth City Code and the Virginia State Code. Development of a principal structure such as a single-family dwelling is not a permitted, an exempt, or an allowable land use within the 50-foot seaward buffer of the RPA, as specified in Section 9.1-10C of that code. A Chesapeake Bay exception may be applied for to authorize an exception from the requirements of this section for approval by Planning Commission should the Commission find the request meets the required development criteria. The first of this criteria being that the request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. This can be applicable to, but is not limited to, the size, type, or placement of a proposed structure. The second, the exception request must not be based upon conditions that are self-created. Third, granting the exception does not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners in the Resource Protection Area. Fourth, the exception request must be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance. And lastly, fifth, if approved, reasonable and appropriate conditions must be imposed which will present, or prevent, rather, the request from causing a degradation of water quality. If appropriate, the Commission may request an amendment of an applicant's submittal to allow for a proposal that meets the intent of the Chesapeake Bay Ordinance. The 5,000-square-foot property at 208 Allen Road is located in the Craddock neighborhood, within the urban residential or UR zoning district. The lot is currently vacant. The 100-foot Resource Protection Area, RPA buffer, extends into the property from tidal wetlands that abut the property to the north. The entire property is located within the Resource Protection Area. Approximately 60% of the property is located within the 50-foot seaward buffer of the RPA. The subject property is surrounded to the south, east, and west by single-family residential properties that are zoned urban residential UR. And a tributary of Paradise Creek is located to the north of the property. The applicant proposes to construct a 1,200-square-foot single-family dwelling and concrete driveway within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area buffer. The applicant previously requested a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize a reduction of the required minimum front yard setback from 25 feet to 16 and 1/2 feet to minimize land disturbance within the 50-foot seaward buffer to the greatest extent possible. This variance request, V-24-09, was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals on June 26, 2024. With the reduced 16 and 1/2-foot front yard setback, approximately 780 square feet of the proposed dwelling encroaches into the 50-foot seaward buffer of the RPA. The remaining 420 square feet of the proposed dwelling and the proposed concrete driveway are located within the 50-foot landward buffer of the RPA. The encroachment of the single-family dwelling and concrete driveway into this landward buffer may be approved administratively by city staff, and so is not included as part of this Chesapeake Bay exception request today. The submitted water quality impact assessment and conceptual site plan indicates that the proposed development will result in 3,553 square feet, I'm sorry, 3,553 square feet of land disturbance within the RPA. The applicant proposes to mitigate this land disturbance by utilizing gutter disconnects as a BMP or best management practice, and establishing six planting units to the rear of the dwelling. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request. As proposed, the exception request meets all required review standards. The applicant has further minimized land disturbance within the 50-foot seaward buffer by obtaining a variance to reduce the required front yard setback to 16 and 1/2 feet. The proposed mitigation meets the recommendations of the DCR DEQ Repairian Buffer's Modification and Mitigation Guidance Manual, and the proposed structure appears to be consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. To date, the Planning Department has not received any public comments regarding this application. This concludes my presentation. I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Landfair. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Chair?
Yep.
Good morning, or good afternoon. So, in terms of the RPA, do we, are we aware of the environmental status right now of the RPA? If people are going to submit these requests, it seems like we should know if they would be, if we're near the RPA being heavily damaged or not. It could be that we're far away from that, but are we aware of the environmental status of the RPA?
In this immediate area?
Correct.
I believe we are, and staff is satisfied with the mitigation efforts that will be taken. The mitigation in part is this BMP or best management practice to have the drain spouts basically allow the water to filtrate directly into the ground, as opposed to filtrate out onto the pavement, creating possible drainage issues, and also the additional planting that's proposed and conditioned with the application. We believe all that will mitigate the impact on the RPA.
Okay. At what point in this area would you feel a need to not approve requests like this?
I guess it's on a case-by-case basis. I think in this instance, we were very satisfied with the steps that have been taken by the applicant, the fact that they had already obtained the variance, that they have attempted to reduce the setback, or the encroachment, rather, as much as possible with the approval of the variance. The setback that they are going to achieve, the front yard setback, 16 and 1/2 feet, is still consistent with the build line that already exists in the immediate neighborhood along the street. So from a compatibility perspective, we don't see any issues with the house as it's proposed on the property, and we feel that they've taken every measure really they can take to minimize the impact on the, on the, the RPA.
Thank you. And can you or Mr. Land speak towards what reducing from 25 to 16 does? Is that more beneficial to them? Does that work for us?
It doesn't really benefit them so much as it pulls the, the house further out of the, the area that could be possibly impacted. It just reduces the overall impact.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
Quick question on that point. That, that new setback, is that pretty similar to what the adjoining properties are?
Yes. And that's important from a compatibility perspective. Yeah.
Just, do you, can you tell me when they bought the property?
I don't know that at this moment, but I can certainly research that before the public meeting.
Okay. It was just more curiosity than, than anything else of the self-imposition. The second question is, does the, does the city keep a list of frequently flooded properties? Would that be in the, would this parcel be located on that list?
I believe the city does keep track of maybe not individual properties, but certainly areas that are subject or prone to flooding. And in this instance, I don't know if this particular area has suffered from those flooding, flooding issues in the past, but we can likewise research that for you before the public meeting.
Is, is that something? I would be interested in that, if that is available.
Right.
I should have called earlier with that question.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
I would like to piggyback on that because if it was in a flood-prone area, their insurance would require that they get flood insurance.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, a couple of questions. It said in the application, they were, there was 2143 square foot, but you said it's going to be a 1,200 square foot.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
I have two comments.
Dr. Russell?
Yes. So, Mr. Melvin, with respect to your, your comment about the, one of you used this word, but we use it in Ches Bay Preservation District. Terminology is the health of the bay, and so this is one single-family house, and if we multiply the control of the pollutant load that goes into the bay by each structure that is in the district, then ultimately, we then improve the health of those water bodies that are in the Chesapeake Bay. And so the Chesapeake Bay Foundation in July of 2024 graded the health of the bay overall as a C+. And it is, it is improving over time since this program came into existence. And the other comment that I wanted to make is while we don't know the tenure of ownership of this property, we do know that it was a lot that was created before adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation District standards.
Okay. I believe there was a house on there previously, wasn't there?
There, there may have been. I, I don't know for sure. But yes, the director is correct. The, the lot was created before the current standards were, were imposed.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Thank you for that report. That brings some perspective. I didn't realize there was a foundation that manages this area, so that, that really helps out in tracking the environmental status of the RPA. Because I'm just wondering, long-term, if other properties in this area decide to do the same thing?
If they're, if they're located in the Chesapeake Bay Preservation District, they require it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next application before you is UP 2410. It's a request for a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard at 3015 Airline Boulevard. The subject property is approximately 5.4 acres in size and is zoned light industrial or IL. The majority of the site is surfaced with asphalt and gravel and completely enclosed with a 6-foot-high chain-length fence. Property currently contains a 17,600-square-foot office warehouse building and a stormwater retention pot. Surrounding area consists largely of industrial and commercial uses. Industrial uses zoned light industrial or IL are located to the south, east, and west of the subject property. Commercial uses zoned GMU or general mixed use include a shopping center with retail sales and restaurant uses, and they're located to the north of the subject property across Airline Boulevard. The applicant proposes to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard at this property. An approved use permit is required for shipping container chassis storage yards within the IL zoning district. The proposed shipping container chassis storage yard will include the existing office warehouse building and up to four truck parking container laydown areas to accommodate approximately 50 truck parking spaces and/or container laydown spaces. The proposed operation will employ up to five office employees and up to 20 truck drivers and will operate Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Proposed exterior improvements are minimal and include remarking approximately 75 existing off-street vehicle parking spaces and providing additional landscaping to screen the use from all off-site views. The applicant plans to use the additional landscaping to screen the use, I'm sorry, from all off-site views. The applicant plans to use the existing parking spaces to provide the 25 off-street vehicle parking spaces required for this use. The site is accessed from two entrances along Airline Boulevard. Between 5 and 25 trucks will access the site from Interstate 264 per day via the proposed access routes detailed within the submitted application. A traffic impact analysis, or TIA, was required by the engineering department to examine the impact of the proposed use on the surrounding traffic network. The submitted TIA concluded that the proposed use would have a minimal impact on the traffic operations of the study intersections and suggests that no additional transportation improvements would be needed to accommodate the proposed use. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. While the proposed shipping container chassis storage yard is not the highest and best use of this property, the proposed use conforms to the surrounding area and will not significantly impact the surrounding traffic network. However, shipping container chassis storage yard facilities provide little in the way of capital investment and job creation. The most desirable use of industrially-zoned sites would be those that support manufacturing, research and development, warehousing, and distribution uses, which have a greater economic impact and benefit to citizens. To date, the Planning Department has not received any public comments regarding this application. This concludes my presentation, and I'll now stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Melvin?
I, I don't know if this is specifically for you. I can ask the applicant. It said that it would be five employees and 20 truck drivers. I'm just wondering, what are the truck drivers working on site? Or do you know anything about their role?
I, I think the truck drivers, and I'll, it may perhaps be best for the applicant to address this in the public meeting, but my understanding is that they are essentially using the site to, to park and store their vehicles, and that the administrative functions of the business are taking place on-site with the five employees that will be there.
Okay. So it's really just, and I'll ask the applicant, but really, I guess from your understanding, it may be just like the five employees?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's right. Yeah.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
I'm Chair.
Commissioner Melvin?
So as highlighted on the screen here, the future land use doesn't exist this area as a mixed-use corridor. What is the reasoning behind this, this designation? Was it just for economic development?
Well, I think in part, it also reflects the, you know, the existing land uses that we have out there. The fact that at the time the plan was last approved, that these were the surrounding land uses, that we had commercial on the north side of Airline Boulevard, primarily the shopping center, the other freestanding commercial businesses, the restaurants and such, but then the light industrial uses that were on both sides of the subject property. So it's really more a reflection of the, the existing uses that were in place. But it also allows for redevelopment or encouraging redevelopment with other uses that one could consider to be a higher uses, best uses for the property. As I noted in my presentation, the zone allows other types of uses like manufacturing, research and development, and the like, which might employ more people, for example.
Okay. Because the only reason why I asked that question is because the Economic Department, Development Department, they found that the shipping containers do not align with this objective, but the application meets our future zoning intent.
Sure.
So there seems like there's some confliction from the comprehension, for our build, comprehension plan about what, you know, what should be allowed here.
Right.
And then it would just be best for the department to make their case, the Economic Department to make their case, by, I guess, providing us or, or city council a economic, you know, impact report of if we do allow this application to, to be approved, how much money, how much, excuse me, how much capital investment and employment opportunities will we miss out by approving shipping containers?
Sure.
Instead of manufacturing, warehousing, and other distributions as, as suggested by the Economic Department?
Right.
Commissioner G.
I mean, respectfully, that's good to know, but I don't think it's under our purview to say what the economic impact is from a land use standpoint. If it's, I mean, I will even agree. I mean, I know how hard the Economic Development Department works. There are better uses, but that's not for us to decide. That's for them to try to get those businesses to come in there. This lot has been sitting pretty underutilized for quite some time, and though it would be great that we could get some other things there, we, we haven't been able to. So it's sitting unused, and I don't think we have the capabilities or the reach to say this would be used otherwise. Economic development can, can give that feedback, but it's proper use of the land.
I'll also add that historically, this property has been used for the storage of primarily vehicles going back many, many years. First as a car dealership, and then later as a storage facility for military vehicles and other heavy types of vehicles. So the land use is, what is proposed today is very similar to historically what's been on the property, and it certainly is compatible with the immediate adjacent uses with the surrounding neighborhood, particularly in light of the fact that they are proposing some additional screening and landscaping for the property.
Okay. And last question, I saw in the application that the, the city treasurer, or they reject the application due to outstanding payments due to the city?
Right.
Do we know how much, the total amount of outstanding payments?
I, I don't know how much, but the, the issue that they are raising concerns other properties. It does not concern this particular site. And the state code and the city code is quite clear that it must pertain to the property that is the subject of this application. So in this instance, that would be no monies are owed.
Okay. Even if it's the same company?
Correct. Right. Yeah. The statutes are quite clear, and I have it in my hand, and I can make a copy for you for the public, public meeting.
Thank you. Because they just made a, a comment that policy holds that application should be approved if outstanding balance is owed.
Sure.
But you mentioning that right now about how they have to be separate?
Yes.
That makes sense. So that's my question. So thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question about that. Yeah. So to that point, there's, we, we have extra info on here.
Right.
Is it, is it proper for us to have this extra info? Should that be sanitized off of these reports?
What's the extra info?
Like the, the fact that there's outstanding fees allowed at other properties if that's not pertains to this, this item here, or the fact that there's better uses of the land? If that's not something that's under our ability to, to judge based on? Is that stuff that we should even include in the reports in the future?
Go ahead.
So let me, let me, I guess, answer your question with a question. So if we, if we take the posture of not providing it, then are we potentially blemished by not being transparent? Right? So we send out, actually, I think for next month, the, the notices for interdepartmental comments have already gone out, and we take that feedback and we report it verbatim for, for what's included in the report. And so I've had experience with a number of other planning departments, Commissioner G, that we would speak to the highest and best use and whether or not, what the economic impact of, of a potential development is. And so I, I have a case next month. I'm going to present that exactly. It is not the highest and best use of the property. And as we develop it, there'll be other planning-related, you know, the infrastructure to support the development based on traffic counts and, you know, the, the potential off-site impacts. Those are reasonable criteria that we use to evaluate requests. They're not the only one. So it has to be a balance. And then, you know, it's our responsibility as staff members that support the commission to provide the objective information, try to synthesize that information and give you a recommendation. And then between commissioners and council members, you take all of that information and you can add the, what we call the, the, the other ingredients to the recipe to, to develop a recommendation for the commission and ultimately a, a decision by the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Because I've seen other planning commissions talk about the economic impact of these things. And even our comprehensive plan, it has the planning department, Economic Development Department working together on things just like this, to seeing if applications, you know, meet best use of economic opportunities. So I guess just knowing what our roles and responsibility here for, for commission will help. I'm not sure, as Ms. G said, if we should cross that boundary or not.
We're, we're going to always present the information to you. So the question, I think, I believe you sent it as an email, how much money is up? We'd rather not even know, and just report it as they're outstanding fees that are owed to the, to the city, and we provide that information to the applicant verbatim. And so that we are not the conduit to try to resolve that. We just need the documentation that it has been resolved for a case to move forward.
The only reason why I ask that question, because I think it would be great for city council to have that, you know, document, maybe not us, but city council to have that document saying, okay, this is the amount they owe. Because if, if it wasn't for the case that each, each property was separate, then if the company owes, for example, 10K, okay, that might be approval. But if the applicant owes like a million dollars to the city, now we have a, a bigger potential problem. So just looking at things like that.
If it were this property, we would have never advertised it. So it wouldn't be before you.
Quick question to Commissioner Melvin's point. And I should know this. I mean, I've been on the mission for 30 years, it feels like. Is, the packet we receive is the exact, exact same one that the city council receives?
It has, it has additional information. So we do what we call a city manager's letter for the manager to sign off on, and what we've recently added to that are questions that come, have the commission raises and the response to it. So they'll get an additional report, this brief, it might be two, no more than three pages.
Okay. Thank you.
And let me just add, after listening to this discussion from our fellow commissioners, with city council, we can be assured with this city council, they will ask for the additional information, because they normally do, because they want to be able to do their own fiscal impact study based on the information provided and how they will go about making their final decision. So it's good, it's better to have the information here with us and we not have to act on it than it not being a package so that once it gets to city council, they are asking questions. Because this is a very astute city council, and they ask in-depth questions. And so I'm sure if they need clarification about who is responsible for the taxes, because I think that's a good point, certainly. Director Russell, it probably will get directed to you at the city council meeting, I'm sure. And I'm basing that on when I watch the city council meetings, the type of questions that they ask and everything, and they're very in-depth.
Sure.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
I have one question. Are these containers going to be empty? Are they going to be storing?
My understanding is they will be empty, but we'll let the applicant confirm that.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any additional questions? No? Mr. Russell?
Excited?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lance.
Thank you.
So, so Chairman Thaxton, planning commissioners, you recall that at our last meeting, we talked about planning commission training opportunities and a survey of commissioners for availability, and we did start the survey process with the availability of staff. Found that the best day to do an additional meeting for training was, is October 17th. However, in that process, we had a staff member that suggested, why don't we use our work session for the training opportunities that are specific to individual topics? Because the commissioners and staff were already present, and there are times like today where we'll have an additional 20, 25 minutes, you know, it's five minutes to walk across the hall before the meeting starts. And that sounded like a wonderful idea. So we want to ask if that's okay with planning commissioners? And if so, we'll start as soon as next month. We have a loaded agenda for next month, though, but so.
Any objections to that suggestion? No?
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
What about the topic, the first topic?
So we have a list of topics that Mr. Melvin has recommended and Ms. Thaxton actually recommended that we do a review of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation District Enabling Legislation and Requirements. So what, I, I would just ask that you allow us some dis- So I would just ask that you allow us some discretion and flexibility to choose a topic that we can discuss and enough to death with the time remaining. So we have eight agenda items for next month. So Chesbey won't be next month, it can't be. But we'll, we'll do it every time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Now we have Mr. Boone, zoning administrator.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Trevon Boone, zoning administrator for the city of Portsmouth. Today, we are here to bring before you pursuant to Section 15.22004, the State of Code of Virginia, in regards to special exceptions and variances that should be brought before the planning commission to hear before they go, before the Board of Zoning Appeals for informational purposes only. We have five cases that are going before the Board of Zoning Appeals on October the 23rd. The first that we have is a variance for 1805 Rodman Avenue. Pyramid Investment Group requests a variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance Section 40.2-534B2 to authorize a reduction of the corner side and side yard setback from 10 feet to 5 feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot approximately 4 feet in width and approximately 100 feet in depth. The next item that we have before you is 2402 Graham Street. Southside Investment Assets LLC requests a variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance Section 40.2-534 subsection B subsection 2 to authorize a reduction of the minimum required rear yard setback from 25 feet to 23 feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot approximately 25 feet in width and approximately 100 feet in depth. This property also is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning ordinance Section 40.2-535 subsection B subsection 13 to authorize a reduction of the minimum rear interior side yard setbacks from 7 feet to 3 feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot approximately 25 feet in width and approximately 100 feet in depth. The next item that we have before you is 1301 Center Avenue. Southside Assets LLC is requesting a variance of zoning ordinance before the Board of Zoning Appeals in accordance with zoning Section 40.2-534 subsection B subsection 2 to authorize a reduction of the minimum required corner and side yard setback from 10 feet to 3 feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. They're also requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals of zoning ordinance Section 40.2-535 subsection B subsection 13 to authorize a reduction of the minimum required interior side setback from 7 feet to 3 feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100, 8 feet in depth. These are the cases that we have before our Board of Zoning Appeals on our October meeting. If they take any questions, if there be any.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Boone?
I happen to be familiar with this area. It's an area where my relatives grew up. And setback to 3 feet. That's the only comment I have with a look on my face.
Yes. Got you, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Dr. Russell, is there anything else today?
There are no other agenda items.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, anything else today? Then this meeting will convene at 1:30 in the city council chambers. This meeting is adjourned.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, October the 1st, 2024, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the September 3rd, 2024, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
Commissioner G.
I move for acceptance of the, of last month's minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September the 3rd, 2024 public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. Everyone hasn't voted.
Oh.
The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Commissioners, may I ask just if you could just go slowly? We're, have a new person on our board and so, so that we can get a little acclimated. I appreciate it. Thank you. The minutes. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Due to statewide voting, our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, November the 19th, 2024, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their November the 12th public hearing or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item, CBE-24-03 Craddock. BMPD LLC requests a Chesapeake Bay exception to construct a single-family dwelling and uncovered deck within the 50-foot seaward buffer of the Resource Protection Area, RPA, at 208 Allen Road in the urban residential UR zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for high-density, single-family residential uses. The property is owned by Madison Virginia Holdings LLC and is further described as Tax Map 416 Parcel 62. This item was deferred from the September the 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Commissioners, Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. This has been a long journey for us and hopefully we're at the last leg of our journey before we can pull permits and start construction. The builder bought this property back in 2020. So here we are in 2024. It was paused for a little while, so it wasn't that difficult. But we, we have come a long way to stand here before you today. We've met with staff many times and I'm not going to repeat what the staff report says. It's an excellent report and it, it represents the project very well. What I'm going to do today is talk about the merit of the project. And my name is Brian Lane and I reside at 217 Cypress Road, that's in Portsmouth, work in Harborview. I'm a land surveyor and I'm familiar with this process and I've been involved with it from the beginning. So we had some staff changes. That happens all the time. And when we had staff changes, we had different recommendations. This is a sensitive site. You can tell that it's a small site. Kind of looks like the house is shoehorned in there and it is. Not a lot of room. We're kind of restricted with what we can do. But prior to us being here, there was a residence on this lot. It was a burn down and it was demolished. So this is technically redevelopment, not new development. But with that being said, we did meet with staff and they identified two steps to get to where we are today. One was to obtain a variance for a front sitback reduction, which we did, that was awarded. So we were allowed, in doing that, we were allowed to pull the house closer to the street. So that gave more rear yard and less impact into the buffer. Now, the second process, the step of the process is why we're here today. And the technical merit of that project is what I want to try and capitalize on. So the, the house is pulled up as far as we can. Doing so, we also have other franchise utility companies we have to work with, but the owner did agree with it and he's going to take those steps to work with those franchise utilities. But to, when we did that, we opened up the rear yard, which allowed for more mitigating. So although we are encroaching into the buffer at a minimum that we can actually afford, it was pertinent that we show some kind of BMP for the, to keep the degradation of, of the water quality at, at the, at the minimum. And what we've done is we've proposed six planning units and you can see all the landscaping that's going to be planted in that backyard. And we've also used a system that came out of the Virginia Stormwater Handbook called gutter disconnects. And what, what that is really designed to do is, is when, when the raindrop hits the top of the roof, it has to go somewhere. So that's the impervious surface we're trying to treat. And with a gutter disconnect, gutters, it's as simple as just putting gutters at the side of the house, bringing down, and the downspout does not allow to order to disperse over impervious area such as concrete or driveways. It takes it out over a grassy area before it hits the ultimate outfall, which in this case is the marsh. Now, the importance of that is not in how it works, but how easy it is to maintain. So this is not a hard, this is not a hard BMP for a homeowner to keep up with. Everybody wants gutters on their house. And when it's built, they just have to point the gutter downspouts in the right direction. So we do use those a lot and it's, it's a good BMP for us to use. And the other one is landscaping. You know, we're, we're all looking to get a little bit more green and this meets that. The other, the other part of this application that I'm going to ask for you to vote on is the exception that we're here today for, and that is for the permission to encroach into the buffer. We can't start a building project without it. So I'll sit back and I'll try and answer any questions you may have and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-24-03. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, are there any questions or further discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion. Commissioner Coleman.
I move that we accept CBE 2403 with conditions.
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jiggs. Madam Secretary.
We have a motion and a second to approve CBE-24-03 with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. Hold tight.
It's not working.
Okay.
My Chris would like to.
Okay, now. Okay, you ready? Hold on, hold on, young. Just one second.
I found it for you, who goes first?
We have to wait for her to open it. Okay, now. Still got someone who didn't vote. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions. Our next item, UP-24-10 Hattonsville Leaf Burner, requests a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 5.4 acre parcel at 3015 Airline Boulevard in the Light Industrial IL zoning district. The property is owned by Leaf Properties 3015 Airline LLC and is further described as Tax Map 574 Parcel 3. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you today?
Good evening.
Leaf Burner, I moved to the city of Portsmouth from Tokyo with my wife in 1995 and I have loved living here ever since. In 2001, I bought a business with two young children and five months later, the world came to a stop. And we were fortunate, we were able to make it through that and we've slowly grown and Suffolk has called and Chesapeake has called, everywhere's called, but we've stayed in Portsmouth. We really love it here. In 2017, we were lucky enough to purchase this property off the Crumplers and it's, it's a beautiful piece of property. Today, for the record, is the first day I ever heard that the future plan has it as mixed use and no longer zoning in Light Industrial. I'd never heard that before. So that was breaking news to me. In the 2000, in 2021, as you guys are all aware, the zoning in the city of Portsmouth was changed and there is no longer a designation for trucking terminal. Southeastern Trucking is here. We have several trucking terminals in the city of Portsmouth, Virginia. Had that not been done, we wouldn't be standing here today. And so basically what we have is currently a vacant lot. And we've been advertising with Nuzmom and then Colliers and they have not been able to find a higher use for this. Everything that comes to us is trucking. That's it. The last tenants left and went to the city of Suffolk and they took their business there and they took their employees there. The people that suffer not having this as container parking, empty container parking, are the residents of the city of Portsmouth. I live in Churchland. I don't know how many of y'all live in Churchland. I run in Churchland. I run in Churchland usually between four and seven in the morning and I pass a lot of shipping containers parked in residential neighborhoods. And that's the reason we have designations like Light Industrial is to get them out of those residential neighborhoods and into a secure place behind bushes, behind screening where they're out of sight and out of mind. Mayor Shannon Glover, in his state of the city address this year, declared Portsmouth a blue city, right? A blue city, which is dependent on ocean commerce. And if we're going to be dependent on ocean commerce, ocean commerce is containers. And we need to give them a place to go. Otherwise, we're just losing out all the money to Suffolk and Chesapeake. And we'd love to keep some of that money here. I heard in the, I attended your work commission and I, I heard that we were delinquent on two tax bills. Was that correct, two? Those were both paid on September 9th. Brian, Will, has the, he has that in his email. There's some glitches in the city IT and we're working to get them resolved. The, the new city manager was kind enough to come to our Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce Portsmouth Division meeting and tell us about all the great things he's doing. And we're really excited about the development of the city and getting better, because that's going to make things better for all of us. So those have been taken care of. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Burner. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Melvin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Question about the containers. Are they, are you planning on allowing containers to be stationary or will, will these containers be coming in and out of the property?
It's, it's rolling chassis temporary storage. So you, you pick up in the, in the, in the port and they'll take them over and drop it and then another guy will pick it up and take it out to the countryside somewhere.
And how long will the turnover be for that, this estimate?
Usually they turn around in one to five days.
Nice. And what will be in these containers? Do you know what type of materials will be in these container ships?
Forty footers and 52 footers, maybe some Forty footers and 52 footers, maybe some 20s.
What type of material? No chemical?
They're mostly empty containers. They're all, they're just empty containers, that's all it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Hi, good afternoon. I did have a question about the number of employees that will be there. It said five and then I think it said parking for trucks or 20 truckers. Could you just elaborate on how many employees you, you might have there?
Sure, that's, that's a great question. And it's, it's actually a great question because it really talks to the, the business model here. So your, your truck drivers that do drayage, does everybody know what drayage is?
No.
Drayage is, he's a, he's a guy driving a rig, you know, it's the, it's the bobtail, it's the cab. And he goes to the port and he picks up a container and pulls it out. And those are all small businessmen and the majority of them are minority small businessmen in the city of Portsmouth. And they own their own truck and they go in and they drive it out and then they bring, bring the container out. And so in order, what happens is these guys are truck drivers, they're not business people. And so the, there's companies that put together a group and then negotiate with your Costpluses, your Targets, your Walmarts to go get their containers and deliver them for them. And then they contract with these small businessmen, which are the truck drivers, to do that. So they should all have their independent business licenses and then we would have one just for the freight company that brokers it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Mr. Burner, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is, is there going to be storage? In other words, is it going to be a situation where you're going to stack containers on this property? So it will be in and out? Okay, all right. And I'm not sure that you can answer this question, but Dr. Russell, what, what kind of tax benefit will there be?
Commissioner Thaxton and planning commissioners, I, I'm going to make some assumptions that I will ask the applicant to verify. And I believe that other than screening and landscaping, there are no other improvements proposed for the property, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Right now, those are the only improvements for the property plan.
Okay. Then so the real property taxes on the property may be marginally increased as a result of the proposed use, but the zoning, it would not change? So the underlying zoning would not increase in the intensity? So it essentially would be your business license tax for, business license fees for this applicant and real property? And that would be it?
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Burner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-10. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Commissioner Cherry. Curry, I'm sorry. I'm terribly sorry. Commissioner?
I just have a question. So if they're allowing other companies to park their trucks, they are, is that like a rented space or you just your particular?
Mr. Burner, could you come back up here, please, so that we can all hear you? Thank you so much.
It's just for the people you operate with, correct?
It's great to be back, it'd just be the one group. It's, it's not, it's not 16 different entities, it's just, it's just one group.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary.
Is there anyone else here who would like to address this application? Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? Okay. If there isn't, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner G.
I move for approval of UP-24-10 with conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve UP-24-10 and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes the agenda for today.
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business? Dr. Russell, is there any further business? Okay. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.